Number seven, Yuba Sutter Lodging Association Contract Services Agreement and Annual Report.
So the Yuba Sutter Tourism Improvement District is a benefit assessment district that was formed in March 2017 to fund marketing and sales promotion efforts for the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. The agreement sets the terms of the 2% district assessment, including collection and dispersment of the funds, the administrative fee paid to the city for managing the assessment, and the requirements of the YSLA to present an annual report. And so with us tonight virtually are Jacob Young, the president of the YSLA, and Amanda and I, please excuse me if I pronounce the last name wrong, Cash Schmittler of MC2, which is the marketing firm. And so they're going to present the annual report and the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. And so hopefully Jacob is on the phone line right now so that we can proceed with the presentation. So Jacob, are you available?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Okay, so Jacob, when you're ready to progress to the next slide, please just say next and I will advance it.
I will do, thank you Diane, our city manager Langley. And yeah, I'm excited to share with the city council just the successes that we've experienced in 2019 and 2020, as well as obviously the challenges of these past months due to COVID and the impact to tourism in general, but also to our local tourism efforts specifically. And then also our plans for the 2020, 2021 year. On the call, we do have Amanda from MC2, which is our marketing partner, as well as our tourism coordinator Cindy Payne, to help provide additional insights and to answer any questions that the council may have. And I just want to, you know, thank also Terrell for all of her efforts she was serving interminably on our board as the city liaison and representative. And you can just tell that her heart and soul was put into this city, and I just want to congratulate her on her retirement and to look forward to our next city representative to continue to move this effort forward. So with that, we'll jump into our presentation tonight, so you can go ahead and go to the next slide. And just quickly, the mission of the YSLA and the purpose is to increase the promotion and marketing tourism and increase hotel room night consumption in the cities of Yuba City, Marysville, Livock, and Wheatland, as well as the unincorporated areas of Sutter and Yuba Counties. And on the next slide, I just want to show and highlight just our overall efforts throughout the year. This would be specifically our website traffic that we've generated to last year as we were rolling out our website and relaunching the Yuba Sutter campaign. This just shows the traction throughout the year as that was building and then kind of stabilizing out, having a spike during the holiday season, and then obviously due with COVID, starting to see that downtrend as tourism in general was slowing down. And now that things are starting to regain traction, a little bit more reopening, we are starting to see that, you know, carrying back up to the levels that we were before the end of the year, where we started to see those numbers stabilizing. So definitely a lot more people excited to get out after being in shelter in place for a few months, looking forward to getting into outdoor experiences and getting into more tourism activity again. On the next slide, it shows specifically Book Your Stay clicks. So these are people who while visiting the website have taken the next step to actually want to move forward with booking, you know, to come and visit and, you know, stay in one of the lodging entities that are represented on the website. So again, this just kind of shows that general traffic and kind of growing, stabilizing, growing for the holidays, coming back down, and now starting to retrieve that activity as that starts to pick up. On the next slide, it just shows the overall traffic of adding to trips. So on our website, it has a comprehensive list of different activities and highlighting different things to do in our area. And so again, just that general show of the traffic that we've had throughout this last year through those efforts as well, of people actually clicking to create an itinerary of items to do while they are visiting the Yuba and Sutter region. On the next slide, it just shows our target market of where we are having sessions generated from. So this kind of just shows a breakdown, you know, city by city as far as people who are engaging, obviously Sacramento and San Francisco, the majority of what we are targeting towards, the Bay Area in general. Yuba City with a lot of local engagement, especially as these efforts are getting going, just to see a lot more people throughout our community starting to engage with that and then share that to their family, friends, and more exposure from that as well. But obviously seeing different businesses highlighted, a lot more engagement from our communities getting traction from that as well. But on the next slide, it does show that 91% of the visitors are coming from our target market specifically that we are reaching out to and part of our strategic marketing plan that we had set forth. The next slide just shows, you know, where that traffic is being generated from, whether it's display ads through social media, paid searches, and then also just organic direct and referral clicks. So where all that traffic that we've had to our website, where that's being generated from. And then so 80% of that obviously being from efforts or more being efforts that are being put out through different means of presenting that. On the next slide, on the future slides too, it just kind of shows some of the different campaigns that we've had. We put together the tourism video that's highlighted on our website. They put a condensed version of that as a YouTube ad, so as you click on different YouTube videos, you get the little ads that pop up that are, you know, 30 to 45 seconds or so. After about five seconds, you have the option to skip the video and move on to the content that you're wanting to view. So this just shows the general breakdown of the investment that has been made to use that means to get this out to people. The industry view rate, meaning that people actually watch the entire video versus skipping that, is 28%. And this video has generated 46% of the people watching it actually watched the entirety of the video. Just shows that engagement that is happening from that. On the next slide, we had an affordable weekend getaway tagline that we are putting out there, especially just people who are looking just to kind of get out of the urban environment of Sacramento, the Bay Area, and come to our area. So this just shows the, you know, breakdown of what we've been doing from that from this past year. And again, the click-through rate typically industry average is, you know, a little bit less than 2%. We've been having a little bit over 8%. So just the effectiveness of those, that campaign that's been put out as well. On the next slide, one of the items that we wanted to highlight was just some of the different wedding venues and for locals, but as well as people from Sacramento, the Bay Area, looking at having a unique wedding venue, have a bigger push towards kind of that rustic outdoor environment to have your wedding in. So again, click-through rate typically is a little less than 2%. Our click-through rate on that campaign has been a little over four and a half percent on that. On the next slide, it showcases hunting. So we have hunting and fishing as the next couple of slides, that outdoor, you know, opportunities that people have to experience while they're here. So the hunting one definitely generates a lot of activity, you know, with over the 2 million impressions that we've had through Facebook and Google Ads from that campaign. And a couple of months ago, we did refresh the pictures that are being utilized, just to kind of increase that engagement that people have. You know, pictures start getting stale over time, so as this has been released, and we'll be doing that on a quarterly to biannual basis to keep that engagement fresh, so that people who are seeing these ads over and over are seeing upgraded content each time. On the next slide, we do have our fishing campaign that we've been putting out there, again, just highlighting the outdoor recreational components that we have available here in our area. And then on the next slide, we did one specifically for birding. You know, a lot of people, you know, with the being on the Pacific Flyway, especially on a national recognition level, a lot of people, you know, come here to witness, you know, the swans and different water fowl throughout our region. And so putting that campaign out there has generated quite a bit of traffic as well. And then on the next slide, we also got into hiking, and starting to kind of make sure that we are staying front of line as people are looking for different opportunities to do throughout our region, including, you know, hiking to Sutter Buttes and into Yuba County, up into Bullards Bar Trails and different areas to make sure that as people are looking for hiking opportunities throughout our region, that these are coming up as top of mind, top of page interest for those looking into that. On the next slide, one of the events that we got behind this year was the Swan Festival. And so we wanted to really make sure that as the Chamber was relaunching that, we got behind them sponsors, but also to help a bit with the marketing as it was getting up to that, the start of that event and broadcasting out the multiple day activities that they had. And so we had, you know, pretty good success as far as, you know, getting that out into the Bay Area in Sacramento with over 2,000 event responses, and then the other data down below that as well. And then on the next slide, it kind of shows a little bit of how much we had spent, you know, putting into that, you know, just dedicated marketing efforts to help get behind that event to get it re-going into our community. And then on the next slide, it's just kind of a general breakdown of, again, you know, between the, for the full year, the Book Your Stay clicks being at just shy of 2,500, people adding things to their itinerary, being that 3,000, or sorry, 7,300 amount, and then lodging page views, you know, of actually looking and seeing that, which might mean that they then went off of our page to look into those lodging, or at least to know it was where, being that 7,500 impressions and page views that we had on that. On the next slide, we just show that on most of the pages, it has that, you know, check-in, check-out dates that guests can put their, you know, dates that they're looking at coming into our area to see which different lodging entities are available for that time that they're looking at coming out here, whether it's around an event or just in general. And then it leads them to the next slide where it just shows the different lodging entities and where they can book, so that will lead them directly to that, to a booking agent to where they can book directly through the website or to a link to that specific entity's booking website if they don't have a booking agent that's compatible with what we use for that. On the next slide, it does show, just kind of on the next slide, you can click through some of these, it does show the breakdown of the different lodging entities that receive the different exposures from that. Collins Lake being up there too, just because it does represent multiple, you know, it's not just lodging, you definitely have the fishing and the outdoor recreational component that's represented there. So, you know, it's not just specifically for the bookings that has generated that traffic, but also some of the other opportunities that are at the lake as well. But it kind of just shows you overall, if you can go to the next slide and then actually go through two more slides, it kind of just shows a breakdown of all the different hotels, cabins, and different lodging opportunities within our community. And you can go ahead and go to the next slide as well. So again, overall, brand new Book Nows, which means actually clicked, and when I booked forward, was that was over 1,000 throughout this year as we continue to gain traction from that. And then overall, we have, you know, seen, you know, as we've seen through all those slides and data metrics, you know, with COVID-19, with the tourism in general, people halting back from wanting to travel. You know, we had to kind of shift gears on our marketing campaigns and strategies. We still wanted to stay front of mind, but obviously not trying to get people here, which that's our entire intent, is to get people here, heads in beds, and we want to get, you know, that activity moving, but especially during those few months, just trying to stay top of mind without actually promoting the tourism to our area for a couple of months there. But as things are starting to reopen, and especially outdoor recreational components, you know, a lot of people from the urban environment are itching to get out and go out and explore, and our communities offer vast opportunities for people to do that. So now as we're starting to release more campaigns, we're definitely making that front of mind. And I believe there are a couple of videos of the campaign that just was starting to roll out that we're calling Mellow Moments, which is little 15 second videos or so. And I believe we have links to that. I'm not sure if it's accessible to show you, but if it is, we'll do that now. If not, we can continue to move forward. That's right, I believe they were, yeah, perfect. And obviously two of the same video, but that's totally fine. The other one was actually the Black Swan Hiking Trail up here in the Yuba County going towards Nevada City Grass Valley, the Black Swan Trail of just highlighting some birds flying over the lake there. But yeah, again, just a couple of videos that are meant to be placeholders in between just as people, you know, kind of providing a little breath of fresh air type thing of approach of highlighting just some of the different resources. These videos are going to be put together to highlight many different aspects of our communities. So again, kind of on those YouTube ads or, you know, through social media, we'll be able to showcase a little bit what our area has to offer through quick little blurbs, just to kind of stay in top of mind and market area. Oh yeah, there's that other video that is there as well. So again, the Mellow Moments campaign that is just being released and starting to get it out there as well. And then as we jump back to the presentation, we'll move on to what other projects we have planned for the next year and bring this thing to a close from there. I'll let Judy catch up and Diane. Should be slide 26. Perfect. And then if you want to just take it back once, yep, perfect, thank you. And so yeah, so just ongoing, we're going to continue the, you know, that what we have been doing as far as this general month-to-month, day-to-day activities. We're going to continue all that going with social media maintenance and presentation and continue to post, you know, a few ads, a few posts a week to keep different highlighting of our region and different aspects that we want to continue to put out for people to engage with, especially with digital ads and website updates, especially right now with a lot of things changing. We want to make sure that we're keeping all our content up to date with business operation hours as well as closures, that we just want to make sure that we are representing what our area has to offer and making sure that that's updated as we go along. And just email marketing, just dated activities, we want to keep going. And then if you go to the next slide, some of the projects that we had planned as we were getting moving forward, which the quarter one is actually going for this next fiscal year, not for the calendar year, but that would be for starting in June moving forward as we're, you know, looking at some specific things. We were looking into some different billboard ads, into, you know, specific areas that would be high density and different opportunities that have been coming up from that. So we had an opportunity to get some between in that $10,000 to, you know, $13,000 range that we could start having targeted ads on billboards. And then we have a visitors guide that we're putting together, so we're on the completing side of that, so we're on the final edits, and that's about to be released here and going into print hopefully within the next week or two, to where once we have that in print, it'll be distributed throughout all the hotels, visiting tourism centers, real estate agents that will start getting that into different distribution means to start getting out to, you know, the general public, as well as obviously specifically to people who are interested in coming to our area for different opportunities. And then in the next quarter, one of some of the different things we had, you know, one was away finding signs. This project will likely be put on hold until we know the full effects of COVID-19. We won't know until this next month as we have quarterly assessments that are turned in for our TOT, which that's where the T bit is done as well. So until we know the full effect from this quarter as well as next quarter, as the activity starts to increase, there's a couple of projects we'll have to put on hold for now. But the way for finding signs, we just want to have a uniform effort. This would obviously be working with the jurisdictions, but highlighting some different points of interest and having a uniform effort to do that, just for guests driving throughout the area, having an easier way of finding some of those different attractions that they can get to. Also working with different magazine articles, to have different travel writers coming here specifically for weddings, but also some of the different aspects with fishing, hunting, and various aspects of that as well. So starting to link with different tourism travel writers to come and write different articles that we can broadcast to different outlets as well. On the next quarter, which this one is happening this upcoming here in a few weeks, but the History Channel, we have been working with them, they're going to be filming an episode specifically all in the Yuba and Sutter areas. So that's going to be taking place here July 7th to 10th. And so they're going to be filming an episode highlighting different aspects throughout the Yuba and Sutter region. And so they're coming together with the timeline from that, so that is officially scheduled. We were not sure with COVID shutdowns with the entertainment industry how that was going to get continued postponed. We were originally hoping to have them here in March or April when everything was lush and green and, you know, everything else of that sort, but still a lot of opportunities for them to do while they're here. But they are moving forward with filming and it's going to be, should be being put out to the public, the episode in the fall. But again, just depending on the entertainment industry's delays, that might be fall or spring, or once we know official release date of that, we'll share that as well. The Brand Ambassador Program, just continuing to work with, you know, the brand of Yuba Sutter and getting that established and throughout the community. So community engagement as well as for our hotel lodgers themselves, making sure that when guests are coming here that we can, you know, make sure the front office staff does know what to highlight, does know what to point people to, so starting with that engagement. That might be in partnership with the Chamber, because I know they have a program where they are doing similar efforts with that, or it might be a spin-off in our own program as well. But we just want to make sure that we are, you know, keeping that front of mind for what we're doing internally for our local community, as well as for front office staff of, front desk of hotel lodgers as well. And on the next slide, the AJGA is happening as well. So they are doing an AJGA tournament, I believe, towards the end of July at the Peachtree Country Club. So the AJG is the American Junior Golf Association, so a lot of amateur pros, so people are in their junior years, so under 18, but a lot of them are moving on to go towards high-end college scholarships and on the trajectory to go towards professional. So it's exciting to get that here, that is continuing to move forward. They're working with the health director to make sure that they're doing things in compliance with the current health initiatives with COVID-19. However, they are still moving forward with that tournament to happen here with those different modifications that need to be in place, established, so that they can make sure that still happens. And they are looking to make this an ongoing annual tournament held at Peachtree, so this is their first year being established there. And we've worked to kind of make that happen as well sponsoring it, to help get the funding to make this event happen and help make it hopefully be an ongoing annual event that will be happening at Peachtree. And on the next slide, so again, our current marketing budget is, you know, currently, you know, specifically contracted for $300,000 annually. And then as they continue to move forward with those different projects, we wanted to start increasing that. However, now until we know the full effects, like I said, we're taking those budgetary changes even within these last months as we're seeing where that's heading towards as we keep moving that forward. And then on the next slide, like I said, we were able to highlight the History Channel as well as the AJGA tournament, but some of those future projects that we are wanting to move forward and are moving forward with. And then on the next slide, we're just going to do a little bit more detail about the, it's how you get their channel, but a couple of the other aspects that we'll be getting is the YSLA and MC2 are marketing partners, will get full access and ownership of any logos, footage, including the B-roll. So any footage that they're doing here, we'll be able to utilize that towards other marketing efforts as well. And it's a pretty popular show. I mean, it's had over one point, a little over a million views on their first season on the History Channel itself, and then through other outlets, another 775, so almost 2 million viewers total, but then the 35 million viewing minutes on Amazon. So definitely a show that's gaining in popularity, and so will be part of this upcoming season that they're working on filming throughout these next months. On the next slide, the AJGA golf tournament, so the date on that was August 16th that they will be holding that through. And like I said, the age ranges, you know, golfers 12 through 19, that will be participating in that tournament. And then there's going to be 75 families coming in to the area for the different people competing in that tournament. And right now, they're all saying there's been a contract worked out with Hampton Inn for them to stay there. And then we did just announce that we'll be doing a $15,000 scholarship sponsorship to work with giving this event here for this season. And then the next slide, Visit California, they do a third Thursday, so it's, you know, a pretty rare opportunity to get to be in front of the entire Visit California campaign. They represent our state on a global level. But on October 15th, we will be doing a presentation to show what the YSLA is doing and Visit Yuba Sutter, I mean, and just inform them about what there is to do in our area and highlight, you know, key businesses and attractions as they're doing their different marketing campaigns, they can be aware of what our area has to showcase on the national and global level as well. And so we'll have a one-hour presentation, including question and answers, with a networking lunch that we'll be going to. So the YSLA board, along with our marketing partners, MC2, will be going to that presentation we'll be doing in October. So definitely an exciting opportunity to be presenting in front of this, you know, statewide program that's marketing globally. And then they'll be doing some social media and blogs and write-ups on their website about showing, you know, what we've been talking about during that presentation. And then last but not least, on the next slide is our visitors guide. So it's a totally comprehensive guide, that like I said, we're just on the final stages of wrapping up, so we'll have this ready to hit the press here in the next couple of weeks, and then within about a month, having that starting to be distributed out. It is highlighting everything that's in our area from outdoor adventures, history, art, culture, locally grown, you know, different fruit stands and things like that as well, as well as different lodging, the downtown areas, and everything else as well. So it's going to be about a 70 to 80-page document that will be made available for guests and also locals to look through to know what there is to do in our area and make sure to highlight the different attractions that we want to point people to go and check on while they're here. With so with that, that will bring us to a close on the next slide, just says, you know, thank you, bud, thank you for giving us the opportunity to let us present before you. And at this time, I invite councils asking any questions that they may have. And like I said, I have myself, as well as Amanda and Cindy available to answer any questions.
Actually, through the mayor?
Yeah.
Just one question for you, since you're promoting hunting and fishing, have you reached out to put packages together with any of our fishing guides? Because the river is absolutely one of our greatest resources, and there's a lot of guides that take visitors, do they have the ability to book a complete trip through you guys to come up, stay, and go sturgeon fishing on the river?
Yes, it is one of the added trick, added trip opportunities. We do list as many of the guys that we are aware of on our website. I know we've worked with Scott Feist quite a bit too, is, you know, working with other, and as well as Johnson's Bean Tackle and some of the other places in the area to make sure that we are completing a complete and robust opportunity, because exactly, especially as, you know, COVID measures keep moving forward, and if they can get more people on one boat, you know, like you said, the rivers are a huge attraction. So I know that the guiding services are definitely one that, you know, it had to make some adjustments to that of how many people they can fit on one boat at one time, but we're definitely doing our best to highlight as many guides as we can to get people linked, because a lot of people do come from the Bay Area as well as the Sacramento region, like you said, to fish all of the different rivers we have throughout the community.
Thank you.
All right. We do, go ahead.
All right, we received two so far. One is from Thomas Burns, and I know of five more local families that are leaving California in the next month, the mass exodus from California. You better look to import tourists from God knows where. I am going to laugh out loud when there are no more hard workers to help pay for the public employee's retirement. And then we have another one from Scott McLaren. Is this a general awareness campaign? If not, clicks, impressions, and engagement all sound great, but how do you measure conversations? Is a booking through stay click an actual conversations for a local hotel booking? Where's the data for actual booked stays at hotels if that's your goal? Can you measure that? Because clicks are not conversations, how are you measuring my return on investment as a taxpayer? And then we have one more from Alisa Rojas Palado. Item number seven, that's amazing, please tell the History Channel to mention the American, the Native American tribe that's lived lives here. Thank you.
So I think there needs to be a point of clarification to that last comment. In terms of the 2% assessment, that's placed on the individuals that stay in the hotel rooms, and so the hotels collect that, and then the city is just a pass-through to the YSLA.
Right. Thank you very much for that. I was going to add that myself. I did, Jacob, are you still there?
Yes, sir.
I did have, similar to our second comment, there is, you are tracking clicks, but there is there a way to extract the data of how many of those actually resulted in bookings, et cetera, as a direct result of your efforts? Something maybe that they would not have otherwise done if it wasn't for your efforts? Are we tracking that or are we able to?
We're doing our best to track that, so the thousand, you know, somewhat clicks that have gone on for booking now, since that is going to an outside source to wherever it's going to their website, we don't know if they, we would assume that they're getting to that stage of actually clicking onto the lodger, the dates, and moving on to actually click it. If it's not held internally and it's going to an outside source, we can't guarantee that that actually resulted in a booking, but they've already seen the dates, the price, everything else. So once they've clicked with good faith, we'd assume that they would have finalized that booking, but there is a possibility that, that once they got onto that lodger's page to finalize their booking with that lodger, they could, you know, stall out and not actually book there. But that's why we would, with good faith, know that they, you know, were getting to about that thousand bookings, if not more. However, we can't 100% guarantee that every single referral on that Book Now has resulted in a final booking with deposit paid, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions before we move on? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to number eight. Ann Spencer's already working his way up to the podium. Fiscal year 2021, citywide sole source and professional services purchased.
The mayor, aren't we supposed?
Yeah, we have action item seven. Forgive me, yes, I forgot to even action item. Do we have a motion for the AMB? Forgive me.
Through the mayor?
Yep. Yep.
I move to make a recommendation for the Yuba Sutter Lodge Association Contracted Services Agreement Annual Report 2020, item A and B.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? There we go. Sorry about that.